I saw, I saw you mouth second Christine, can you say that again?
Second.
Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, great. We're first looking at any adjustments to the agenda. Annie, can you take us through them?
Uh, yes, item four M. So we will discuss the school department capital request for special town meeting and annual town meeting. There may be a request for a vote on that. Depends how that discussion goes. And we will review all town capital requests by funding source and capital requests by.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, those are the only adjustments. That is the only adjustment.
Okay, great. Moving now to public comment. Not sure that I see any members of the public here, but if there, if anyone wanted to make comment as though they were a member of the public, um, just raise your digital hand and you have three minutes. Ideally, it's something pertinent to the agenda and we'd love to hear from you. I'll give it a moment. Okay, seeing none, let's continue with the agenda. Um, first up for A is the Hadley Public Schools condition, uh, conditions of assistance. And here to tell us about that is, uh, let's see, I guess Annie, you're gonna tell us.
Yeah, well, actually, I'll let you know why you're looking at it. So the conditions of assistance annually, the chairperson of the school committee, the superintendent of schools, and our administrator for special education, director of student services, Celia Utley, all have to sign annually that the district complies with federal and state regulations pertaining to um, all laws pertaining to students with disabilities. It's a requirement of the funding that we receive. Celia also annually takes the administrators through their responsibilities under IDEA. Do not need to vote to adopt these, essentially, it is required that we adhere to them. Celia is here to answer any questions. The conditions of assistance were linked into your agenda. And certainly, um, if you have any questions or Celia, if there's anything you'd like to add about what.
Recording in progress.
Celia, would you like to add anything to that?
Um, I don't think there's anything to add. We already did our, I did a, you know, like a slide presentation with, um, the leadership team, just sort of going through that. Um, and then, um, yeah, I just, it's to get the two forty and two sixty-two grants around a hundred and fifty, a hundred sixty thousand each year that we get. Um, so that's all I have to add unless anybody else has any questions.
Great, thank you, Celia. Committee members, any questions for Celia or Annie about this? Okay, seeing none. Um, Annie, do we have to vote to approve this?
No, you don't vote to approve them. Humira, you'll be signing and that signature states essentially that you are stating the entire governing board acknowledges that we're in compliance and must be in compliance with these regulations and laws.
Great, I look forward to receiving that and I'll sign it when I get it.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is the HEA presentation regarding question two on the ballot, uh, this upcoming election cycle. And here to tell us about that is Mr. Richards.
Thank you for having the time to hear from me today. Um, I asked to be here so I could speak on behalf of the MTA and the HEA on question two. The last time we spoke, you were in support of the Thrive Act. Today, I'm once again seeking verbal support for this act as it exists as question two on the Massachusetts ballot this November. This would be the initiative to appeal, to repeal the competency assessment requirement for high school graduation. The initiative amends section one D of chapter sixty-nine in Massachusetts general law to state that the MCAS will no longer be a requirement for graduation and that the students will have fulfilled the districts, and that students who have fulfilled the district's requirement but did not pass the MCAS may request a diploma. This diploma will not reflect their scores on the MCAS. In Massachusetts, there are roughly two hundred eighty-seven thousand high schoolers, uh, enrolled. Let's say a fourth of those are tenth graders, just for easy math. Uh, that's seventy-one thousand seven hundred and fifty students. A big argument against this is that it only affects one percent of students. That'd be seven hundred and seventeen students. In Massachusetts, there are about four hundred high schools. So that means that we're talking about one or two students per high school that this would affect. Today, we have the ability to reach one or two students. Maybe all they need is to have this weight lifted to stand. It's hard to reach every student. I know. I teach every student at the elementary school. But when I have the chance to reach one, I do. And today, we have that opportunity together. So I will ask you, please voice verbal support for this ballot question. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kenny. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention again. Um, school committee colleagues, you might recall that we did have a conversation about this. We were in unanimous agreement to support the Thrive Act. In particular, there was a strong vocal support for doing away with the MCAS for, as a requirement for graduation and leaving it to, um, schools to determine, um, the best competency determinations toward graduation. And, um, I would welcome, um, that continued support for this question two. I'll start by saying, uh, I do support this, uh, this question on the ballot. I'm, uh, glad that it's, uh, that it's making its way to the ballot. Um, I welcome my colleagues to share their support or, uh, thoughts or concerns.
I'll go. I'm in, I'm in support of question two. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I, I don't think the MCAS should be used in the term of graduation. Simple as could be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I also am in support. I, I think it's quite clear cut for me as it is. Ethan, um, I don't think it should be a requirement, so you have my support in that.
Thank you, Tara. Christine?
I'm in agreement. Um, I, I, I've never, uh, we, we haven't had an issue.
Yeah.
Like other, other districts have, but I've always found that, um, it's an undue stress that does not need to be, uh, put on our students, especially for ESLs.
If what?
Uh, I, I, I just remember, like I said, I, I think I've told the story where we had a student that, uh, it was, it was so incredibly difficult, um, having, you know, she was a Polish speaking student and so that it just didn't make, you know, uh, my heart just absolutely broke for her. So, um, yeah, I, I agree. That
Right.
Should be, they should be eliminated.
Great, thank you, Christine. Alright, Kenny, there you have it. We are expressing our verbal support. We look forward to this ballot measure, um, being on the, on the ballot this coming election and, um, hopeful for a positive outcome.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone. Have a wonderful day.
Thanks. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item of the agenda and, uh, that is the Panama Field Trip. And here to tell us about that is Ruth Ann Fitzgibbons. Hello, Ms. Fitzgibbons.
Hello, thank you so much. I, um, we're already approved to go, so what I'm actually hoping for a vote tonight is that I would be allowed to extend it to eighth graders. Obviously, this is a family choice anyhow, so, um, nobody would certainly let their child go if they couldn't handle it, I think. Um, so I'm just hoping I can, um, we, I, I have just enough people, but I'm thinking that it would be nice to have a bigger group of students going.
That's terrific, and I, I agree. I think there's a, there's a self-selection process between the, the families of, uh, being able to say whether their child is able to, um, be on a trip like this. But I think it's really valuable. Students rise to the bar that we set for them and to provide them an incredible opportunity for learning as such would be, I think would be really powerful. So if a family can afford to send their eighth grader, I think we should definitely, um, welcome them. That's my personal opinion. I'd love to hear from my colleagues. Tara, you have, you're on unmute, so I'll ask you first.
Yeah, sure. Um, so I am, I, I am excited about this. I am in support of it. Um, I actually had the opportunity when I was in eighth grade to go to Mexico with the Spanish club. Um, and so I guess my only question is, I know at that time they, they made an exception for me and let me go as an eighth grader, um, but I had to have a one-on-one. Now, I don't know if that was just the school at the time. I didn't know if there were any, um, restrictions or requirements in students' age that we would need to meet. I'm in support of it. I just wanna make sure that age-wise, we don't, you know, we're following whatever they state.
Ruth Ann, do you wanna comment on the age question? Oh, Annie, go ahead.
I'm happy to. Go ahead, Ruth Ann, if you'd like to, that's.
Okay, that's funny. I, a, a part of what Tara said broke up. Are you saying, um, sorry about that, it's probably me. Um, but, um, is, is, are you saying that the, the, the age, the, the company that we're going with would support the age or the work would support the age?
Um, just that it's, it's, it's appropriate and there are any additional requirements that need to be met to have a student of that age to go. And I think that's beyond, I see you saying no, so I think that's beyond wonderful. I think it's great.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, yes. The company themselves has had middle school groups before, so we would be just a little unusual that we would mix it with both groups, but, um, I, like I said, I think the kids that choose to go, the families that choose to send them, um, they know what they're doing, so. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Annie, did you wanna add anything to that?
No, that's.
Okay. Alright, great. Christine?
I'm all for it. Awesome. It's wonderful.
Ethan?
Same, same here. I was actually hoping there'd be an exception for a, a fourth grader and a second grader, but I don't think that's on the table yet.
Yeah, I saw that coming. I did.
I, I, actually, Ethan, honestly, when my boys were in sixth and fifth grade, I did bring them with me to Nicaragua, so, um.
I'll sneak them in a suitcase.
Sounds good.
Terrific. Thank you so much for thinking about it and for making this opportunity available to our eighth graders, Ruth Ann. It's, uh, it's wonderful. Um, do I hear a motion to vote to allow eighth graders on the Panama Field Trip?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, terrific, motion passes. Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm also, I'm also D on here too.
Oh, you are? Terrific. Okay, so tell us about hosting students from Spain.
So, and I was, I was mentioning to Annie, I, I, I'm gonna tell you about it. Um, and you've heard about it from last year, I think it was from, we, we had students from France. And what I'm actually hoping is that we can talk about this and it can just be a thing that you say, yep, when it happens, let, let it happen. Um, this year, it's hummingbird tours. They have a program where they bring students over. This year, it's from Spain. They stay with families. Um, the families really just have to provide, um, meals for them. They have all kinds of excursions. They have their own, um, uh, their own spending money. Uh, they come to school three days with the kids. We did it with the kids from France last year. It was great. So I'm hoping that we can once again invite our families to host students from Spain.
Terrific. I, what a wonderful opportunity. And I, I don't know about the, uh, case by case versus all of them. Um, I'll talk with Annie about, you know, which, which model makes sense. But for now, let's, uh, take this one specifically. Colleagues, how do you feel about, uh, supporting another, uh, group from Spain in the community?
I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Tara.
I support it.
Thanks, Christine.
I'm supporting as well.
Alright, Ethan. Terrific. Yeah, it's so, so great to hear that the hosting of the French students went well and that students really appreciated it and that we found the host families for that. That was my biggest concern was whether we had enough host families. So it's, uh, it's really wonderful that we'll be hosting another group. I think it enriches the, the lives and experiences of our students. So I'm really excited to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You each, you each said your support, but would you mind doing, was there a motion and a second to approve this that I missed?
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Alright, thank you, Ethan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Alright, it's official. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Good to see you tonight.
You too.
Alright, moving on to item E. Um, Annie, tell us about the acceptance of donations, school supplies from Walmart.
Yes, very straightforward. Walmart, uh, very generous, donated a number of things to Hadley Elementary School. Crayons, scissors, binder clips, glue, all kinds of parts and craft materials. We're very grateful. And per school committee policy, um, it requires a vote from the school committee to accept said donation.
Great. Do I hear a motion to accept the Walmart school supply donation?
So moved?
Second.
Your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Thank you so much. And please extend our thanks to Walmart, Annie.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Alright, moving on to school safety. Equiture, I don't know if I spelled that correctly.
Yeah.
Alright, Equiture Weapons Detection System.
Yeah, so we did speak about this in the summertime. We applied for a grant at the recommendation of Hadley Police. And we were selected to receive equipment, weapons detection equipment. The equipment that we will receive is no charge to the schools. There are no future charges to the schools. There are no future licensing fees for the school, schools. This is equipment that works in, um, concert with our existing camera system. And it is designed specifically to identify weapons. And then when it thinks, the camera thinks it has identified a weapon, it sends an alert to the people that we have identified. So there'd be a small group of people that would receive an alert and that alert would be the image that this camera thinks is potentially a weapon. And also indicating precisely within the image what, um, what it believes to be a weapon. The people who get, we determine who gets initial notification. That's something that we are talking with public safety about. Public safety says they'd like to have people who get that initial notification. That would be a small group of people. Anybody within that, when they see the image, the images come to one's email, laptop, and also to their cell phone as a text. As the system is designed, that anybody that's in that first notification group, if they look at that, where they also are able to see something and they say, yep, this needs to be escalated. There's something happening. They can hit escalation in the system and then automatically a broader notification goes out to a second tier of people. State police are contacted, nine-one-one is activated, a whole slew of things happen. So the system is designed in terms of school safety to assist schools in trying to prevent dangerous weapons from entering a school building working with those cameras, so trying to prevent that from happening. And then reducing the amount of time that we certainly hope and do not expect that this is something that is, that is, um, in our future. But it certainly does not, uh, hurt in any way to be prepared. So by, the system also assists with making sure that things move very quickly if someone believes that in fact there is a weapon on the premises. That's what it's designed to do. We'll speak in executive session in more detail about, um, actual deployment, location of cameras, things of that nature. Um, but this was more of a general conversation just to make the community aware. Again, this is something that through notifications and we also, uh, spoke very briefly about one of our summer meetings that we'd applied for this grant that they suggested that the police. And we were fortunate in that we were selected to receive this.
Great, Annie, thank you for explaining that. Um, I do have many questions. Um, and I will ask them, uh, momentarily. I'll first, uh, allow my colleagues to chime in with their questions. Tara, Ethan, Christine?
I don't know if I have any questions at the, at the moment.
Okay.
Later.
Yeah, Humira, if you have questions, go ahead. I'm still kinda thinking through it, but by all means, if you have some, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, questions that I have, uh, are, and I'll start by saying, I think it was after Parkland where we had a conversation about safety and we, um, I remember suggesting, well, you know, inner, uh, inner city schools are safest when it comes to guns because they have those gun, you know, metal detectors at the doors. Why don't we do that? And I remember it was like, wait a second. They, they looked, everybody looked at me like I had three heads that I was asking for that at that time. Um, so I personally am pleased with the initiative of detecting guns before they even go into a school. Question I have, uh, they start with, uh, you mentioned that there was no, uh, cost upfront or ongoing. Um, and you also mentioned that it, it's subsidized by a grant. So I'd like to know, does the grant fund the initial part as well as all future? Who's funding the grant? What's in it for them? Uh, how many, um, schools has this been installed in? Is it a pilot program of, is it Venkata? Whatever the, the name of that thought, that camera system is that we installed? Is this like a early pilot thing that, and we're potential guinea pigs? Um, not that there's anything wrong with that. We do wanna learn from these opportunities. Um, so that's a first wave of questions. You wanna start there?
Sure. I'd love to. And in some of this, I'll be very honest if I'm speculating about what some of those answers might be. So, uh, one regarding how, how many schools it's deployed at nationwide or they're testing nationwide. I don't have the answer to that, but I can find that out and I can back to this. I don't have the answer to that question. However, um, where we will not pay, so it's, it's currently the funding, grant funding, but also I believe the company wants to make this investment. So how, how would a camera figure out if something is a weapon, right? So it's no doubt using AI to make that determination. And what would be in it, now this, I'm speculating, what would be in it for any company that is creating something that uses artificial intelligence in order to determine is that what I think it is? So the more the system does it, the better it's going to get. And I would imagine that the better these systems get, given the number, I can't remember how many mass shootings we are at in the country as of yesterday, as in Birmingham yesterday. I think it's over four hundred this year. Um, that the market would probably be well beyond schools. I mean, in many ways, schools are quite safe. All the doors are locked. People have to be buzzed in. You need an ID. That is not true at the grocery store. Not true at most places you go. So there's nothing to say that, that the company that's, that is, selling this product, has created this product in conjunction, in conjunction with others. I don't believe that they would limit their market to just schools, right? So weapons detection and other venues might be even equally important. Some might argue even more important because those venues are a lot. Um, I will say, so because it's using, and, and when I say that we will never have future costs, we won't if we don't expand the system. So we were granted twelve and if you get twelve, uh, cameras that work with our cameras. And so if we ever wanted to expand it, we would have to pay for that. The prices at that time. If we expand licenses, we would have to pay for that. We're also given a server, the server is separate, the server that we use for Verkata. The two systems work well together. It's not the same system and it's not the same company. And that's because this information that's being fed into the system, I mean, we also, our school security cameras, those cameras don't keep that data forever time period that we retain that data for unless it's necessary for something else. Whereas these images, these data would, I think the turnaround is, you're talking like twenty-four hours. I mean, it's, it's gone very quickly. Because if you detect something, if you detect something that, and also there could be false positives, right? The machine could see something and think it's something that it isn't. Just while you're first, it doesn't go, the machine sees something and then you set off an alert throughout the entire community. You have two levels and then our first level of notification of public safety would be a part of that. Try to say, okay, this is clearly not anything, made a mistake. It's on image on a shirt or saw something that it thought was a weapon when in fact it wasn't. Um, and so those images, really, you need them in that moment to keep something out of the building, but you wouldn't retain that data for ten, fifteen, thirty days. You wouldn't, you have it, it's, it just clears out. Um, but then I believe a day, again, I can confirm exactly how long it's kept on the server. So in terms of cost, I think I answered that question for you, that again, would, if we wanted to expand it, then we would have to pay for that. But for what we're currently getting, it would never be a future cost. What's in it for the company? You heard me speculate, but that seems relatively, that seems pretty reasonable to me, right? That if, in fact, this is something that could be beneficial not just to schools, but to other venues. Weapons detection may be something that other people want. We know that, um, like anything that uses artificial intelligence, anything, internet searches, anything, the, the more data, the better. So there is, there is something, they're, they're definitely getting something out of it, which is practice.
Right, so it's.
You have a better way of describing this, Humira, but you don't have.
Right, right. So, and it gets up, a question that I had was, who is the source of funding? And it's a private source of funding, hoping for an economic impact to their company's bottom line. Which, it, it makes sense that they're interested in that.
And I was thinking, I'm not saying they can do this, but I would imagine, I'm not saying in any way that they promised this or they ever could. But if a company could say, we can with ninety-nine percent cert- certainty guarantee that a gun will never enter X space, yeah, they really, they can afford to. I'm not saying they could get there, but in initial stages.
Having been, uh, working with AI, um, uh, a little bit here and there, um, I do have a lot of questions. I hadn't considered that this was an AI tool. And so I have a lot of questions about the parameters that it would be looking for. Um, as we know, uh, as I'm sure many of you all have read, there's a lot of bias in AI. It's built by a certain demographic of individuals who have certain biases and programmed those biases in because there isn't as much participation at the table when it comes to AI, um, building out AI. So I, I, I have a I have a lot of questions about the kind of parameters that it will be searching for. And, uh, before I'd be comfortable because, you know, uh, it, the, the last thing we're gonna want is, well, it was because a kid was wearing this specific uh, demarcation on their T-shirt. Or because it was this combination of color of skin and, uh, you know, low riding pants and, you know, all kinds of, um, not fail-safe methods of potentially targeting and then really harming the trust and, uh, you know, relationship that we have for our kids. So I guess it comes back to how many schools has it been deployed in? How, how sure can we be that they're, that we won't be, uh, getting into that situation? What does a potential pilot period look like where we are, we are not, uh, going right from install to pulling over each kid that has set off this alarm? Those, those are some of the questions I have. And also, I mean, I wanna come back and stress, I, I wanna know what parameters it's using in AI to detect that. If, if it's just looking at visuals, if it's not, not using millimeter wave or some scientific methodology to actually, um, send out signal waves and then be able to see shapes. Then it's, it's based on, you know, parameters that humans are entering in and, um, I, I need to know what those parameters are in order to feel like I'm protecting our students. Um, that's, so let's pause there on, on my questions. I'd love to get any other thoughts or questions that you might have. Tara, Ethan, Christine?
Um, is there a way for us to find out more about this technology just in general?
Yeah, I was going to suggest. Yeah, I was going to suggest that perhaps you can send to me and then I can put in a doc in the publicly available folder, all the questions that you have. I can make sure so I do justice to your questions. I don't want to miss any part of them. And then I can get written responses from, uh, the company equator. I can get written responses to all your questions and bring them back to the next school committee meeting. I'm seriously trying to write down questions, but I'm thinking if I do it that way, then the public will have access to seeing all of the questions that I'm getting responses to and we can review them in October. Certainly not trying to thwart conversation here, but that would probably be helpful.
You also, you also have the recording as a resource, Annie, to, to, to make sure you're capturing it all. So, uh, so i- if actually, we, if you could, if, if instead of us putting something in writing, if you could count on the recording as a documentation, that would be great. Um, just because, uh, you're going to have to make minutes anyways, and I think it's just really important to capture the spirit of the conversation.
There's not a lot of information. Um, I actually pulled up their site. It really does not explain it well. Yeah, uh, do we know of any other schools that have in fact used this?
Yeah, so I know of one district that we talked, uh, Sergeant Romano and I spoke with, uh, representative from the company when we were going through the grant. That was the school district we were talking about in Florida. Don't know of any in Massachusetts, but again, I will bring back responses to all of them.
Sounds like they're, they're a company that has a history in just, um, audio and video recording and nine-one-one dispatch related stuff. So public safety recording. But yeah, no mention of this technology on their website. And they also don't seem like a startup per se. They're, seem like a well-established company with a previous name um, of DSS Corp. Um, any other thoughts or questions? Tara or Ethan?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll just say, I, I mean, I think a lot of the things that were running through my mind, you, you captured, Humira. Um, I love the idea of envisioning like a, a way to make our schools safer. Um, and I, and, and this certainly seems like a a, 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 a version of that. Um, but I do have a lot of questions of how they're detecting, what they're detecting. Um, and, and just better understanding wh- what they're looking for, right? You talked about, you know, sending out the waves, but I'm just thinking about like, how is a camera detecting what's inside somebody's backpack? Right? So that's the first thing that goes through my mind. Um, the other thing I just, you know, and this is more of like a logistical question, it's kind of like, where would these cameras be? Um, within the building, right? There's twelve camera licenses. Um, and so like, we're, you know, like, just that's more something that comes to my mind, like where would we want these cameras to be? But that's obviously a little bit further down the road. Um, I think at this point, it seems like a really cool idea and that sounds like really basic, but like, it's a great idea in theory, but I'd love to see it play out so that we can better understand what we'd be putting into our building and what kind of information those, this company would be capturing and, and what, to what benefit it would be to us.
Yeah, I Really good points.
I think, I think I just need to understand more about it. So like, as you were talking, Humira, and asking these questions and your thoughts, it, it started to get my mind rolling, but then it, it starts to wonder, well, besides looking at this, what other data is it capturing beyond what its intended purpose is for? So I, I think in general, I just, I think I feel like I need to understand more about the technology, um, in general.
Yeah. And by the way, that former, the former name is DSS Corp. And they, they do Department of Defense related stuff, counter unmanned aerial systems and drones and other things that must fly over and detect whether a group of people at a wedding look fishy or not and should be targeted. Um, but anyways, we look forward to getting more answers, Annie. Thank you so much. And, and yeah, um, and in terms of more detailed questions, Ethan, I'm not sure if you were on the committee when we went through our last.
I don't think I was. I feel like that was one of the meetings on this side, probably.
Right. And so, you know, that's the kind of thing we would do in executive session, obviously, because of, you know, sensitive nature of those kinds of, of things. Great. All right. Thank you, Annie, for bringing this to our attention.
Sure thing.
All right, moving on to some policies. Ethan, I think you're telling us about the policy IHGB.
Yes, uh, so this is our, this is our first reading, uh, as school committee. This is, uh, the home calling policy. Um, uh, not a huge amount of pain here. What we did is we just kind of synthesized, um, the idea that, uh, students could participate in after-school extracurricular activities and leaving that as open as possible at this time. Um, that is the, that, the kind of big, uh, not even big, but the change that we made to the policy.
All right, very good. Christine, anything to add? Being on this committee?
I think that was a no.
Okay.
Yeah, you're muted. You're muted, Christine.
One of those days. Okay. So now I think Ethan covered it. There was very little, um, that we had to clear up, but we made just a minor adjustment here or there.
Okay, very good. Tara, any questions on this? It is just first reading, so we'll bring it back next month, next month. Okay, very good. All right, moving on to the next policy we're looking at is JFBB. Christine, tell us about that one.
Okay, so the school choice, um, policy, other than a couple of grammatical type things that we changed. The biggest thing that we did change was we took out where it said the resident student, uh, students will be given priority placement in any classes or programs within the district. Uh, obviously that doesn't, you know, that's not something that we would do or for, or enforce or any, you know, should not be included in the policy at all. Um, they're
All, all enrolled students should be equal.
Should be equal. Yeah, it, it, there's nothing that should change that. And then we just changed the wording on number five so that all of our documents will have the same wording uh, when it comes to, um, our pers- our position on non-discrimination.
Terrific. Thank you. Uh, and this is second reading, so we would be looking for a vote. Or is it, is, would the vote be at the next, remind me again?
It's, it's, I'm requesting first and final because the attorney has said that number three is actually not even legal. So we just need to change policy. To your point, all enrolled students have to be treated equally. You can't say some group gets us in another group.
Yeah. All right, um, do I hear a motion to approve the school choice policy JFBB as presented?
So moved?
There a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are moving next to policy ACAB dash R. Um, and Ethan is going to tell us about that.
Yes, we, uh, this is, we are eliminating this policy, uh, sexual harassment definitions and procedure. Um, it is, uh, quite outdated. Uh, we looked at the beginning, we looked, we did our first reading of a number of policies surrounding sexual harassment and, and Title IX and things along those lines. Um, really what we're doing today is just eliminating this policy because regulations and laws have been updated and this policy no longer reflects those regulations and laws that have been changed. Annie, did I hit that all right?
You did. And a lot of the change to language, you've already approved. Handbooks. And so then district policies, the policy subcommittee just went through their own digesting of a first reading of a full bunch of updated replacement policies for all of our ACAs, ACABs, a whole bunch, which you'll see next month. But do you know we have up-to-date language in the handbook, so you already approved. It's important is that we don't want policies on the website that are not in line with current regulation and law.
So I have a, I have a question about removing something and not replacing it with anything. I, and not sending people in the direction of what we do have in, in turn. If you're a person evaluating our district, as a place you want to send your students, um, they won't necessarily go combing through the handbook. Um, if you're a parent, if, if you're, if you're a parent, ultimately, it's, you know, school committee policy that of course, the law, the, the law is what it is. And so we have to be consistent with the law. As we are with all other policies. Um, but should we not be putting something in its place?
So you do still currently have several AC policies which will be updated. So on the district website, not just in handbooks, but where anybody can go to see district policies, you will still see policies on non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And policies that speak to sexual discrimination and sexual harassment. This particular one, the attorney felt as though the language and procedures were so far outdated that these other ones were leaving, uh, and as policy subcommittee is looking at the updates to those, they will start coming to you next month. So it's an excellent question. I don't want you thinking that there is absolutely nothing now on the website that speaks to our commitment toward, our stance toward non-discrimination. Um, there still are policies that speak to non-discrimination and, uh, that harassment will not be tolerated. And, but, and those will be updated. This one, she just suggested eliminating in the near term and then we'll update the remaining.
I wonder, uh, Ethan and Christine, is there anything in this policy, uh, aside from the outdated portion, that is to date and accurate, but not covered in any of the other ACAs?
Not that I found. That it, it's, it's really, it's out of date and redundant. It really does, is not, um, everything that we're updating is, has a, we have a policy in place and that we're working on the updates. This policy is um, not necessarily, and then if anything would lead more to more confusion, I think. Because it is not quite the, you know, it isn't quite as update as the other two policies that are up there. So it could actually be a bigger problem if it remains.
Okay, Ethan, any other comments to add?
I would, yeah, I mean, I think that was great, Christine. I think I would just add also to, to Annie's point that, that, that I know it's not the, the, necessarily the policy, but the, the fact that the handbooks have been updated to reflect up-to-date laws and regulations. I don't know if having that plus this in the same space necessarily ge- gives an, any clearer picture to, to kind of the point that you're making, Humira, which I think is a valid one, like, you know, like, what about not having anything in there? But if we have those, uh, those policies in the handbook that, that are up to date, I think that provides a little bit more guidance in this, this space of a month, if there is, if there were to be any questions about it.
I have a question.
Yes, Tara.
So generally, what we have for policies don't differ very greatly from other districts in the state. Um, we all have something that at least, um, kind of resonates in some form. Um, in a lot of ways, um, can be very, very similar. So if this is something that, you know, was looked at by our attorney, what do other districts have in place? Um, because I understand the redundancy in it and maybe outdated language in it. Um, but you know, are other schools just completely eliminating it as well? Or are they adding something in its place, even if it's something that reflects and further, um, further, um, supports what's already in our handbooks?
Um, so, so the answer is yes, Kim sends out to all of the, I mean, as you know, many school districts using exact same council. Send it out to everybody that use this, this and this, get rid of this. If you go on MASC's website, I don't believe such a policy called AS, ACAB or even exists. So, um, and also you'll notice that in this existing policy, there's very specific procedures for how one is to respond in terms of doing an investigation. And they actually don't match what is in our handbook, what's required by law and what we're expected to do. So to Ethan and Christine's point, it creates massive confusion, like which one of these are you doing? So when I get rid of the one that we're not to be doing, follow what's in the handbook. And no, MASC does not have an ACAB R that I can find anywhere. The attorney for multiple school districts said, get rid of that, even double-checked, really, just get rid of it, get rid of that. And the policy subcommittee has all the policies, the recommended replacement policies and they went through, um, first reading of those this evening.
Okay, um, I, uh, hearing your support for this and the fact that we're covered, we're not, by eliminating this, we're not eliminating something that is not presently covered by our policies, not necessarily our handbook. Everything that are, is in our handbook should be in our policies. Uh, but that what we're eliminating is not going to leave a loophole. Um, I would be in support of eliminating it, um, in light of that. Tara?
Yeah, I look forward to seeing the updated ones too, and I think that'll further help us kind of look at this and understand that we're covered and there are no using your language loopholes.
Yes, um, I noticed that MASC does have an ACAB.
Correct.
Not a dash R. Do we have that ACAB in place?
Uh, yes, we have an ACAB and that, the policy subcommittee read tonight for the first time, all of the recommended revisions to that. We have an existing ACAB. It is still on our webpage uh, under district policies and the policy subcommittee will be presenting for first reading next month. ACAB, sexual and sex-based harassment and retaliation.
Okay, very good. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the elimination of ACAB dash R?
So moved?
Is there a second? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you, policy committee. Uh, moving on to the Hartsburg annual approval, Annie?
Yes, as the name, uh, implies every year. So I visited Hartsburg, they submitted all of their documentation. You can see what I am expected to review while I'm there. And, uh, I reviewed all of their documents. I was on site. I checked those things that one has to visually ensure. And they have done everything they're required to do. So I recommend that the school committee vote to approve Hartsburg.
All right, uh, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, Hartsbrooks, uh, to give Hartsbrook their annual approval?
So moved.
All right, I hear, okay, terrific. First by Christine and a second by Tara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, moving on to superintendent updates, Annie, thank you so much for sending these out weekly. They've been very helpful. Um, is there anything you want to highlight from this?
Uh, no, just always want people to have, one, just a reminder to the public. The school committee does receive these weekly summaries in an email. The public sees them because they will always be updated, the most recent at the top and linked into agendas. Um, so people can see those. You can go to any past agenda and if you click on the link for superintendent updates, you'll have the most recent version of what's there. Um, no, just always the, want to give the committee a chance to ask any questions and have it on the agenda in the event that somebody in the public, uh, came to public comment and have it.
I, I do have to say that I was very sad to miss the board of trustees dinner. It's something I look forward to doing every year and this year I needed to, uh, that, that I was called again to, um, help my father, uh, through, um, a health-related, uh, challenge. And so I was unable to make that night. He's doing, he's doing great and improving. Uh, but I hope you all got to go. They're such a great group and they're very enthusiastically in support of all that we do. And so was it a good night?
Very nice, very nice.
Fantastic. Fantastic.
Terrific. Well, great. Huge thanks to the board of trustees for hosting us again. All right, uh, moving on to the next item of the agenda. All right, moving on to the next item of the agenda. The Green Works, Green School Works Grant Program and Select Energy Proposal, Annie.
Yes, so very quickly, there's nothing to vote on here. Just because we've heard about this in discussions that we've had about geothermal. And part of my charge is to be always scouring the horizon for potential funding sources to assist us with these projects. Green School Works Program has not been formally posted yet. So they're still putting together the RFP that they would post and then people could apply for funding. Just I, right now, how it reads is that. In order to be eligible. A school district applying for this program would need to be in an environmental justice community. It is not one, that does not mean that we don't care about environmental justice. It has to do with very specific criteria about demographics, median income, and other things. So I think there's four criteria. So the community doesn't need that. The other option, if the community doesn't need that, is a, if you are a Title I school. In our district, Hadley Elementary School is a Title I school, Hopkins Academy is not a Title I school. And so that the reason I connected the Select Energy Proposal that you folks heard about, I want to say almost a year ago. Perhaps it was last summer when they presented that to us. So this, if they write this RFP, the way they're currently describing it. Hopkins Academy would not be eligible because Hadley does not meet the community criteria. And the other option is to be a Title I school, Hopkins Academy is not a Title I school. However. If we thought that it made sense to explore the possibility of a solar project at Hadley Elementary School. Hadley Elementary School, if they don't change the criteria, might very well meet the criteria. And certainly, a solar project at Hadley Elementary could help. With any increased energy costs we may see, should the school committee vote to move forward with. The East Energy Conservation Measure of Geo. There's nothing to do at this point, just wanted to keep the public and the school committee posted. So we will keep our eyes on this funding opportunity, keep you apprised of what the requirements are. And I just wanted to, as we continue our conversations about energy conversation, conservation measures. And our overarching strategy. That certainly perhaps there is a role that Hadley Elementary could potentially play in a project at Hopkins Academy. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Annie, really glad that you have found this opportunity and whatever we can do to be helpful to them. In all that we've learned about building envelopes and energy efficiency and. It's a great opportunity to network with them, I would say. In the event that and that could help them know more about us and want to. Fund a solar initiative at Hadley Elementary School, I think that would be. A really great thing to bring in funding that would help us offset the cost of doing that, having more options. So thank you for looking into that.
I will say that the select canopies that are at Stonehill College. It's above the student parking. Is a fantastic, a fantastic addition. It it's, it's very impressive, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna Google that and and try to find them, thank you so much for that tip. Great, I've made note. All right, moving on to. Item M, School Department Capital Requests, STM and ATM. Here to join Annie to tell us about it is Chris.
Yes, so. As a starting point, you have three links there, we'll start with that first link, School Department Capital Request, STM and ATM. Chris and I received what you have in the packet from Town Hall. On perhaps Thursday or Friday of last week. We were fortunate enough to be able to meet with the interim or acting town administrator, who's also Chief Mason, the police chief. And with Linda Sanderson, the treasurer, treasurer, so they can walk us through. What they're recommending to the capital committee. Ultimately, the town's capital committee, that will have a meeting tomorrow at two o'clock, and I believe Christine Pipchinsky intends on attending that meeting. Um, they ultimately will make their own votes and recommendation. But what you see here is what the treasurer is recommending at this point in time and the town administrator and the chief of police. And you'll see that a number of, the majority of the school items are listed under debt exclusion. And you'll also see in the notes that at this point in time, the recommendation is that there would be no debt exclusion articles at special town meeting. Which is now scheduled for November fourteen, I believe, is that right? Did I just make that up? Okay, I'm right, November fourteenth, special town meeting is now scheduled for November fourteenth. They would not do debt exclusion borrowing articles. Those would happen at annual town meeting. If that is the case, then you can assume that everything that's under debt exclusion. Would happen if capital committee and select board and others agreed. What happened at annual town meeting in May, because their debt exclusion, they would then require a ballot vote. Uh, within, I can't remember, thirty, sixty, ninety days, Jessica Spank-Nagle knows, but then folks would have to go to the ballot. So it's a two-part process to pass first on town meeting floor, and then secondly, it would go to the. What they have, the school department, that could potentially be a special town meeting, is just over twelve thousand dollars. And that is money that would help us make some minor adjustments and improvements. To fix some of the issues we have in our ADA compliant bathrooms at Hopkins Academy. What you also see here is on the second bullet M. I is all town capital request by funding source for fiscal year twenty five. That just gives you an idea of the recommendations in terms of every department's capital requests. Which ones are being recommended for reserves cash budget, which ones are being recommended debt exclusion, et cetera. And the final thing you have are the capital requests by department going out about ten years. I'm extremely grateful that Linda provided us all this information. It's very thorough, because if you recall at your last meeting, part of the discussion you all had and something Paul brought up was. It would really be helpful to kind of know all the pieces. What is the town looking at in any particular fiscal year in terms of capital? What Chris DeJardin and I discussed, and we discussed this with Linda and the chief. Is that we thought perhaps that it would make sense, since all of those articles at the top. If nothing changes, would not be, they would not be in this special town meeting warrant. It would not be discussed until May. Our thinking is that perhaps what we want to do is that Chris DeJardin, Chris Pipp, the capital liaison, and I. As a starting point, and bring all this back to the school committee. Would look at various, all the capital items that we have. And this was a suggestion even of Linda's, is to try to organize them as like a school construction article in a given year. So not to be so particular, which also gives us some freedom if a town votes for. For us to have funding, if something changes, a school construction article gives us a little bit more freedom than let's vote on painting. Then all we're doing is painting, right? Now we would cluster construction articles together. And spread them out over a ten-year capital plan, and we would cluster them in a way that made sense. So for example, we might suggest a criteria could be, start with safety. Followed by or on par with accessibility, so safety and accessibility. Followed by aesthetic, not that aesthetics don't matter, but that's an example of a criteria. I'm not imposing one, I would say the school committee would decide what that criteria is. But we could start out and say, here's our thinking, now push back, what would you like to see changed? And why am I recommending all of this? I just think it makes sense for. All of us together to be clear about, we're asking for these things or this particular item now. Because this is a criteria that we applied to it. Because keep in mind, if we're talking debt exclusion, the town has to vote to borrow every single time. And I think, I think taking into consideration the information we have now, what other departments are looking for, and being really clear about. Why do we think we need this thing right now? I think that it'll be important for us to have a clear criteria, be on the same page and have a compelling argument. Because debt exclusion is, we're asking a lot of the town to do that.
Thank you, Annie. Appreciate you taking us through that and being judicious about when we make the asks for what items. And I fully support your analysis. I welcome other questions and comments from the team as well, Christine.
No, I'm all, I'm. I'm still sort of looking through this.
Okay, all right, sorry. I'm I'm taking unmuting as a signal of of having something to say, but that's okay, Tara and Ethan.
I'm with you, I I mean, I know, obviously, this means we have to, you know, kind of slow play a few things and put things off to 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 the spring. But I think. I still like our plan, I still like our, you know, what we have planned to do. Moving forward and, you know, not all of this is going to happen right away, so I just have to kind of temper my expectations sometimes.
And I should clarify something, I'm sorry, Tara, I know you're off me, but you just made me think of this, Ethan, and I don't think I was completely clear. Although the town has indicated that all of the articles above that they were recommending at this time for debt exclusion. One of the things that Chris DeJardin and I discussed was, and we talked about this with the town administrator and the treasurer. Perhaps looking at something like IT, because as you can imagine, we did the timing about it, but waiting until annual town meeting, then we're waiting till ballot. Our our replacement IT is not coming in until next summer. But perhaps we can look at our itemized list of what is in that one hundred and nine thousand dollars and say. Okay, what are, what absolute necessity about devices in hand? So we would also suggest, perhaps then saying to the town, is there a way that the IT request? Could fall under reserves cash budget? And can we do that at STM, special town meeting, excuse me? So that was one thing I wanted to be clear about, I'm sorry, Tara, I know you came off mute, but when we talked about things slowing down, I would. Tech would then say, let's, let's try to move tech there. And these minor, we had, we have. Disability accessible bathrooms at Hopkins, these were minor adjustments, as you can tell, for twelve thousand dollars without building an ADA compliant bathroom. So moving that out, including that in a future construction article, and moving the tech down to. Reserves cash budget. If the town thought that was a good idea, so sorry about that, Tara.
Thank you, Annie, I appreciate you adding that, and I agree, that makes a lot of sense, Tara.
No, I have no questions about it, I think this makes sense for us to be able to look at it, I I like Annie's logic behind it. And I think it allows for a little bit more flexibility, and if something comes up a little more urgently or things need to be moved around it. Allows flexibility and I think it's another way that. We're working with the town on things, when you look at fire and and safety and whatnot. This allows us to, even though the town. Always knows we work with them, we are somewhat of a little bit more of a separate entity, and this kind of brings us a little closer in. And I think that just helps for them to understand where we're at too. So I I think this makes good sense.
Yeah, Christine, any final thoughts?
No, I agree with everyone with what they've been saying. So I think, yeah, just go ahead with what we're, with what Annie and Chris suggest.
Great, very good. All right, Annie, do you need a vote on this?
I have a vote there, but I don't think I do. So you guys all know what we're going to try to do and, because I don't have a formal vote, I don't, so.
Okay, all right, terrific, thank you, bring it back to us when you have a vote, if you need a vote. All right, moving on to the item N, Business Manager Report, Chris.
Okay, so I have two reports for you tonight, the first is the Budget Expense Report. You know, it's still early in the year, so there's, it's really not, you know, a heck of a lot going on, a lot of salaries, just had. One or two payrolls at this point in time. There are some lines that are, at this point in time, over budget, which might surprise you if you're looking at it, you know, how on earth could we be over budget? And what the majority of these are. Something like special ed transportation, for example, shows zero budgeted, yet there's two hundred thousand dollars encumbered. And what we actually did was, you know, we, we budgeted for the two forty sped grant to pay for transportation. And some circuit breaker funds, but we haven't gotten the grants yet, so we kind of just put it into the general fund. And once those grants are approved, we can transfer the expenses over. So there were a number of accounts like that, actually, that, you know, it's, it's kind of just a. A parking place right now for the purchase orders until we actually get the grants approved, and then we'll move them over. I don't know if anybody had any particular questions about any, you know, lines on the report, I can certainly answer those if you have any.
I'm seeing, I'm saying, shaking heads, so no, I think there are no questions on this. We can move on to the next report.
Sure. Okay, that's the revolving account report. Some of the accounts we haven't, like, for example, lunch. We still haven't received the June revenues, so Kelly is actually reaching out to the state asking where those June revenues are. Haven't heard back yet, so I'm not really sure what's going on with that. I did check with her and she said she did submit for them, so. It must just be, you know, kind of one of those things that the payment is just arriving very late, so. Once that is, that that June thirtieth number. Might get bumped up, it might actually get bumped up into a later month, because once the year gets closed. Which is coming up soon, they can't really add that deposit to June anymore, so. You know, the lunch account will will increase, preschool revolving. This is a funky time of year really for things like revolving accounts and and grants that have a carryover from a prior year. And that is that the town hasn't quite closed out the FY twenty four books yet, but yet we are. Already, you know, three months into FY twenty five, so. We end up getting things like balances haven't been rolled over yet into the next year. Or, you know, in in some cases. Revenues haven't been posted, you know, they they. They received the revenues, we've received some, just haven't been posted yet, so until they are. I can't include them on the report, again, once they are, I'll go back right to July and 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 adjust, you know, if that's when the revenues were received. And you'll get a more up-to-date report.
Great, that was my only question on this report was, how can we run a preschool on nine hundred forty one dollars and fifty one cents? But you've answered it, which is that there's money, both in carryover balance and revenue, it's just not. The books having not been closed out, it's not reflected here.
Right, yeah, so on, once we get them posted, then we can add them in.
Very good. Colleagues, any other questions on the revolving accounts? Okay, great, thank you, Chris. And anything to say about the geothermal project updates?
Sorry, I muted. Well, there's. I forgot the, oh God, the designer's name slipped my mind, CHI. I just don't remember now. I got two out of three, okay. So CHA is coming out this Friday to do another walkthrough in reviewing their plans. They determine that some of our ceilings might have to be lowered in the hallways. Which actually, and and this is why we've done this, it fits perfectly. And really makes us look pretty smart, so I appreciated that by them, in that we held off on the capital plan ceiling tile replacement. Until this geothermal work was done, because we we would hate to put new ceiling tiles in and then find out we have to move. You know, the height or or try to squeeze ducts into a small space, so. They're coming to look at it on Friday, just to determine what areas this will have to happen, and that will help us out tremendously with the ceiling tile planning, so. We have that. Trying to think, oh, we, we did, Anne and I. Took part in a call with MSBA last week on. Some potential geothermal projects that HES was selected as one of the schools. We were pretty confused because we spoke with the director of MSBA about Hopkins. And then we get an email about HES, we did ask them. Are you sure you're talking about the right building? And and they said, yes, they are. There were a number of criteria that they used, but essentially, they were gathering information for a future program. They took great pains to make sure that we did not think, because they were talking to us, that meant that we were going to be awarded anything. And so really what they're doing is gathering data from what they consider to be kind of a. gathering data from what they considered to be kind of a typical small-town elementary school, both in size, age, et cetera. And, um, you know, they're asking for the building plans, electric bills, oil bills, um, items like that. And, uh, so we are supplying them with all of this information, and then they're just going to, uh, enter it in their database and, and make some determinations then, but, um, so that it was, uh, it was exciting at first, and then slightly less exciting when, when we found out it was the wrong building. But that's okay, we're, we're willing to work with them.
Well, thank you for helping them. Definitely a lot of work, and then, you know, may or may not get a return on investment for that work. However, uh, if if we are able to apply and it could augment what we're planning to do anyways for the high school, then it could make Hadley Public Schools and, uh, you know, a geothermal heat, you know, uh, driven facilities in both places. And, uh, that, that could have different economies of scale and different levers that we could push on, uh, in, in, you know, stepping up the town's commitment to, um, exploring some of these newer technologies. So, thank you for doing that. Great. Any questions for Chris or Annie about the geothermal project timeline? Okay, and, uh, you may have mentioned it, Chris, but can you tell me again what the ETA is on the? TA?
Okay, so, um, the design work was at thirty percent complete, which was right according to their timeline at the end of August. They expect to be completed by late November, early December, then we will get the TA study. So it's looking like, um, it would be ready for a school committee vote on to go or no-go, uh, for the January meeting.
Terrific. Great. And if we're, uh, you know, I think, I, I believe that it, it's helpful to remind them that we're on a timeline and we're working towards that. And, uh, I, I'm sure you're in touch with them regularly and, uh, thank you for being visible as a customer anxiously awaiting their TA study.
Yeah, I have to say they've been pretty good to work with in that, you know, it's not one of those situations like, boy, I haven't heard from these guys in months, uh, you know, they're they, they reach out fairly often, you know, I mean, not every week or anything, but you know, every two or three weeks, just to either ask questions or just fill me in. So that's nice to see.
That is great. Great to hear. Thank you. Okay, um, we are moving on to section five, action items. We've already approved the addition of the eighth grade to the Panama field trip. We've approved the, uh, hosting of, uh, international students from Spain. Um, we've approved, um, JFBB and eliminating ACAB dash R. We've approved, uh, the annual approval for our Hartsburg School as well as the acceptance of donation from Walmart. Approving the STM and ATM capital requests. It doesn't require a vote, but we've symbolically, uh, we're completely in agreement with your sentiments, Annie and Chris, on how to proceed. Um, approval of the payroll and expense warrants for August. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
I.
I. Passes, thank you.
I. That's how you put it.
Um, approval of the school committee minutes for July twenty second?
So moves.
Second?
All in favor?
I.
I.
Motion passes. And, um, item J, approval, sorry, appoint school committee representative for bus driver, unit A and unit D negotiations. Annie, it's that time again?
We're just getting ready. So we're just getting ready. It'll probably, I would imagine, it'll start, uh, I would imagine after the holidays. But good to get some of us off the ground.
Well.
At least know who, who's going to be doing it.
Right, okay, terrific. Um, I, I know we're not a full team right now. Uh, I, I'm sure, you know, Paul, I'm sure uh, would love to have a, you know, a per- perspective on this, but I wonder, uh, Tara, Christine and Ethan. Do any of these sound interesting to you, being the school committee rep for the bus driver contract? The u- unit A contract or the unit D negotiations?
Glad to do anything you want.
Christine? What, what, what's your interest?
I mean, I did it with, I I've been involved in negotiations, uh, twice now and you know, I'm, I'm more than willing to do it.
Great, we're so grateful. Thank you. Um, last time you negotiated, which were the units that you negotiated with?
Bus drivers and D.
All right.
The powers.
I think it was the powers. Do you have any interest in unit A? And Annie, maybe you have a point of view? Yeah? I mean, I think that this would come naturally to you in light of your own experiences as, as an educator. Um, Annie?
Yeah.
Does that sound right? Um, and were you looking for one person per?
I think one, if you folks are comfortable, that helps with scheduling. So just like Christine was the one-point person and brought back information. Of course, all, what you're granting is essentially, you can, as many as you want to do, you could then just vote it in a block. You're granting this individual the authority to negotiate on behalf, but everything is subject to final vote of the school committee.
Right. All right, Christine, I, uh, I would welcome you, uh, being the rep for unit A. Um, Tara and Ethan, I wonder if you have an interest in being the rep for the bus drivers or unit D respectively?
I'm happy to help in either way. If Ethan, you have a preference, I'm happy to do the opposite.
Um, I don't have a preference.
I've done all three. It's, I think my first year I did on school committee, I did unit D. It's been a while since I've done them, but I'm also happy to, to do whatever, honestly.
Tara, it would be great if that was your first year to revisit that and see how things have evolved and changed and, um, we would love your thinking on that.
Happy to.
Thank you. Okay, terrific. And that leaves the bus driver, uh, contract. Ethan?
I mean, sure, sounds great.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your.
By not showing up to this meeting.
How did he know?
And, and honestly, if it becomes an issue where somebody can't do it, obviously, um, I'm available more during the day than you know, you guys are. Um, and you want me to take it, I will. That's not a problem.
Thank you, Christine. That's very generous. I really appreciate that offer. All right, we're gonna move.
I think this might be helpful. I'm gonna assume maybe this is helpful. So I have listed Christine, uh, unit A, Tara, unit D, Ethan, bus drivers. And does it sound like it makes sense? And Christine is a potential alternate if someone's not available? Might be helpful to do that now.
Yes, definitely.
Any and all, so Christine Pipper, alternate for all.
Yes. Thank you, Christine.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do we need to vote on that?
Um, why don't we just say those are the liaisons as?
Do we hear, do I hear a motion to, uh, assign Christine as the unit A liaison, uh, assign Tara as the unit D negotiator and assign Ethan as the bus driver a contract negotiator with Christine as the backup for either of those three. Should the primary not be able to make it?
So moved.
And all right, all in favor?
I.
Hi. Terrific, thank you. Okay, school committee updates and general announcements, um, we're on section six. We're gonna start with Tara, who's going to tell us a bit about the playground, um, project, CPAC and CES. Tara, you choose your order.
Thanks, and I hope my dogs don't bark. Um, so, um, CPAC, um, they've changed their meeting time and I was not able to make it, so I'm hoping that I will be able to help them. They've had a change in, uh, leadership. Someone's left their district, so I think they're trying to kind of reorganize themselves um, and how they're going to function. So I'm hopeful I can make their next meeting. Um, CES, we meet on Wednesday for our first school meeting of the year. So I will report back, um, in October on September's meeting. Um, and then the playground, you have the link there. And if you go to the most recent update um, for today, I've added pictures that our playgrounds are in place. Um, and our children and teachers alike are extremely eager for them to be in use. Um, so we did, um, get recognition. I did get an email, um, that, uh, East Hampton Savings Blank Bank is pledging five thousand dollars. Um, so thank you to East Hampton Savings Bank. Um, we're waiting on the funds for that to come in. Um, and where things stand right now, because when you look at the pictures, they look pretty darn ready. Um, so we need to get the playground inspected. Um, so, um, Chris has been working on getting that coordinated. Um, wood chips need to be delivered and installed, and those are another two separate entities. So now we're up to three different entities. Um, and then if you look at the pictures, I don't have a picture of the swing set up here. It's on the other side of the building. Um, but in the top right corner, there's this disc-like thing with a big pole going up it, and there's a net sitting on it. So that is one of those cone spinners. So the net will come up and it'll be, uh, shaped like a cone. And that needs to get, um, put together, and I guess that will be put together, uh, within the next week. I am being told, as well as the swings, the, um, structure for the swings is up, just the actual swings need to go up. Um, so that is, um, what we wait for. And I think everybody is, um, working very diligently to try to, um, coordinate all those moving pieces to get the playground up and running as quickly as possible. Um, if not for the children, then for the teachers. So, um, everybody's very excited. It came along very nicely. We're very excited on how they look. And I know Ethan probably frequents there, um, around the building to do drop-off, but if you haven't seen them yet, go take a look at them. They're, they're pretty darn cool, if I can say so myself. Um, so we are going to have a grand opening. Um, we have it scheduled for October eleventh at one PM. That is a half-day at school, at the elementary school. Um, we wanted to do it during a weekday, and we wanted to do it early enough so that our large donors were at work and able to make attendance to that. We will be sending out invitations, um, written invitations to all of our large donors. Um, and then we will be spreading the word out to all of our community. Um, there will be light refreshments served. Um, there will be recognitions, and I'm hoping to see a bunch of kids playing on the playground at that time. Um, another thing which, um, is somewhat related, we've got, um, some uh, a hopscotch, a four-square, um, a map of the United States, um, kind of randomly situated. I think the, the hopscotch is over by the, um, pre-K area and the map. And the four-square is located, um, over by the, um, older kid corridor, kind of in between near the, where the bigger playground is. And our fantastic, um, Mr. Richards is coordinating, working with some of the high school students who had done art club in previous years to restore those, um, restore those paintings. Um, so he will get paint donated to him, and he will work on having his students start that. Um, hopefully next week they'll start working on that. Um, that's, you know, his schedule. But it'll be exciting to have a fresh coat of paint on those things and having things looking bright and cheery when we've got the new playgrounds in place. And they may have other ideas on what might make it fun for the kiddos, just kind of on the asphalt around the, the playground. So I'll update if, if that comes along. Um, we're still been so focused on getting this playground in that we haven't further again addressed the, the, um, donor recognition, and I'll fully admit that's mostly me, um, because I just want to get these playgrounds in. And I can't, uh, dedicate any more brain power at the time. Uh, and last but not least, um, we met with CPA last week. Um, and all members present unanimously voted to move forward the request for the Ford and Place surfacing to town meeting. So on November fourteenth, um, this will be a CPA, um, item. And we are gonna work hard to try and spread the word and get as many people um, available to go to town meeting to vote for this for our kiddos. Um, so it's really exciting. We're very excited. Um, it's a, it's a big ask, and I'm hoping we can get that, um, approved. Um, and as a side note, they don't do these in the winter. Um, so the, the, kind of the time they stop doing these installations is end of October. So should this get approved at the special town meeting? It would be something that we would be looking to install over the summer in between this, the school year. So that way it doesn't interrupt, um, kids being able to play on the structures during the school year. And I think that's all.
Great. And in the meantime, there would be wood chips down there.
Yes, wood chips will be there until then. Yep.
Got it. And tell me again what the amount is, uh? You may have said it already, but the CPA.
CPA, two hundred and ninety thousand.
Excellent. Thank you. And congratulations on getting CPA unanimous approval. That's terrific. And I look forward to, um, that successfully passing in November as well. Um, we'll all work to get the word out and be there at that new, uh, town meeting date. Great, thank you. Any questions for Tara? Okay, seeing that, let's move on to finance. Um, there hasn't been a tri-board meeting. Um, and actually, I thought we had had a conversation about, about the tri-board liaison. Whether that should be continuing to be me or whether that should be. I'm not sure whether we came to a conclusion on that, but anyways, there hasn't been anything again, and so we're gonna continue on. The fields project, Paul isn't here, but I wonder, Chris, whether you could give us a little update on that?
I can, yes. So we, um, we've had some issues that have been difficult to get addressed. Um, we've been working with the contractor on that. Um, they had some people out a couple of weeks ago, um, to address a list of the issues that I had sent them. Uh, but when I was out on the fields, oh, sometime last week, I noticed that some of the items were not uh, done the way I would have liked them to be done. And so I sent another email out on Friday. They are going to be sending, um, people out tomorrow. And I told them that I would join them on the fields tomorrow, uh, to kind of show them exactly what I had issues with. Um, you know, rather than going on Wednesday, we, we scheduled a meeting for Wednesday um, where I would be there, the designer would be there and, and a couple of other people. But I just thought, what if they still don't do it the way, you know, we're expecting it? We wasted another day, you know? So if I just go there on Tuesday, tomorrow and kind of walk them through it, hopefully they'll be fixed, you know, to the way we need it done. And, uh, then we can go on. Um, a lot of new grass was planted. Uh, you, you may see, um, you know, areas that were hydro-seeded and slice seeded. So that hopefully will start to show some shoots coming up in the next several days. Uh, you know, we've had decent weather for it, um, no rain. But those sprinklers are running, um, quite often to keep it hydrated. And, uh, you know, at least it's been the cool nights and the warm days really that are kind of required for grass to grow. Uh, and so I, I'm hoping at this point we can pretty much wrap it up this week. But again, you know, until we're, we're satisfied with it, we can't just, you know, sign off on it.
Chris, thank you so much for taking that approach. It would be really easy to be like, okay, well, we got it, you know, good enough. And, uh, you know, this is not an easy project. And thank you for just making sure that it's done right, um, and holding our partners accountable. Uh, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any que- any questions for Chris? Okay, great. Let's move on to, uh, policy. Uh, Ethan and Christine, you already shared with us, uh, a whole bunch of things. Is there anything else to give us an update about?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we kind of got into it a little bit, but we kind of took the first glance at a lot of the non-discrimination and sexual harassment, uh, policies uh, that, that we need to kind of revise based on, on, on our, um, on our lawyers. So I think we'll, we'll, we'll continue to look at those and as, as Annie shared with us in the policy subcommittee meeting, it's, it's policy season. So it looks like we're gonna be looking at a lot of, uh, policies coming up.
All right, great. Sounds like fun. Okay. All right, great, sounds like fun. Okay, moving on to uh Item F, General Announcements. Um, Annie, do you want to share this one?
Uh, so this is usually um David, it's an opportunity for David Phil if.
That's right.
The town side.
That's right. And so uh when David is at our meeting, we'll give him the opportunity to share with us uh a little bit about the uh, what's going on at the Select Board. Okay, um, we're moving next to Item Seven. Um, and the Chair will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and not to reconvene in open session. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, then we will go into executive session. So uh would anyone like to for, support that motion?
So moved.
Backing in.
All in favor? Or does this need to be a roll call vote, Annie? Okay, Christine?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Mara, aye. All right, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for attending tonight, and uh we will um.